I did not want to hear myself back. I'm glad to see you back.
Oh, that would have been really good.
You've been missing. I'm glad to see you back.
No, they have the film.
Good for you!
Apparently it's still being filmed.
Okay. I don't enjoy it there either, but... Alright. That's gonna take some getting used to. Wow. Yeah.
Careful.
Thanks. I was like, ooh, magic.
Okay, guys, you got 25 seconds. We can count down. It's green.
No, it's green. Oh!
Learning curve we got here.
Yeah.
Boy, I get... Well, now you know, the meeting's coming to order. Holy... Yes, we're all new. Roll call.
Ms. Howe?
Pardon?
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Chandler here, Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Benzie?
Here.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Present.
Thank you.
Alright, the next agenda we have is item two on civil reflection. However, I do have to mention something to you on this. I hope that... There's so many things that are happening locally, statewide, federal, global, whatever. But I'd like to have you, if you can, Marilyn Washington passed away. So I want that, please, if you would, keep that in your thoughts after our moment of silence. So we have a pledge of allegiance and then our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have approval of the agenda, item three.
Move approval of the agenda as presented.
I'd like to make an amendment.
Oh.
Brenda's like, wait.
Okay. Jump up and down screen, that's what you need to do.
I would like to add a report from Mr. Almarigi, and I think we should add it, um, 13A.C.?
Uh, you could go 12 on the committee reports.
I was just gonna say committee reports, right.
So we'll have a safe routes to school.
12.
On 12.
On 12.
A, and then 12B, an update on broadband? Okay, thanks.
Hmm, okay, nope. So we're gonna have an amendment for 12, item 12. It'll be A, safe routes to school, B, broadband, with Mr. Almarigi.
So I withdraw my motion.
Should we throw your second?
Yes, sir.
And we take the agenda with the two changes, Almarigi, I call A and B.
Second.
Okay.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item four, disclosure of conflict of interest. Is there anyone here that thinks of themselves? Okay, there's none. Public statement. I had one. Is there anybody? Thanks, Judy. Give me a chance to look for mine.
Evening. Judy Gardi, Park Lake Road, Friends of Park Lake. I'd like to address number 13, unfinished business. A, items for introduction and discussion. B, public access easement by the Clinton County Drain Commissioner. In the memo that you have from Karen, it states that if you desire the Drain Commissioner to provide an easement that would allow for the construction of a trail or public access across the county property to connect with the township property on the east, he wants to know that. In other words, he wants to know, really, do you want to develop the trail? And you know, over the weekend, I think I figured it out. You don't have a plan. I think I have probably written more CIP proposals than anybody in the room, with the exception of Karen. And every time I write a CIP proposal, one of the criteria that you have to meet is a goal and an objective that's within the Township Trustee's strategic plan. The last strategic plan that I see was written, what was for 1620 to 2020. I mean, 2016, sorry, to 2020. That would be a long plan. But I think it's difficult for you to move forward, to take votes, to choose direction, to make decisions, if you don't have a strategic plan. Now, Ryan made reference to this, um, two weeks ago when we last met. And I would like to ask, who provides the leadership for writing the Township Trustee's strategic plan? Where does that leadership come from? This is the document from 2016 to 2020. It outlines your goals and your objectives, and it starts at the beginning with an action plan. These are the five or six most important things that we want to get done. And I think that we're having a difficult time, and I say "we" because it's all of us together that are having a difficult time moving forward and making decisions. And I, I think it's because you don't have a strategic plan, and I would just encourage you, I'd ask the question, who is responsible for providing the leadership for that? And how can you get it done, or how can we get it done? Because even this one that was done in 2016, it was done collaboratively. I remember going to a part of the public process where we talked about those strategies and those goals. It was a facilitated process. Obviously, you must have brought in a consultant, but the leadership to say, "This is what we need, this is the roadmap that we need," must have been provided by somebody who is within you, among you. Two, just quickly, very important things, two other important things. Well, I'll just back that to a minute. I would say that the Friends of Park Lake would support you asking the Drain Commissioner for those easements. Two other very important things. First, traffic calming on Park Lake Road. You all know, my house was hit by a car about a year ago, March 13. And I came to you about a year ago and said, "We gotta do something about calming the traffic on Park Lake Road." And then we had a hit-and-run, uh, probably about three weeks ago. So, Friends of Park Lake, we have gone to the County Road Commissioner, and Doug has agreed to work with us to develop a traffic calming strategy for Park Lake Road. We will start with a walking audit, and he, from the county level, this is a county road, and so he, from the county level, will engage the township when it's appropriate and where it's appropriate and how it's appropriate. But we will be looking at things such as, limited to, but probably, probably not limited to, but signage, crosswalks from the Creamery to the Township parking area and from the boat launch to Wishwasher Park. And then, um, non-motorized way trails that would take us along, um, the road down to, uh, the park and the beach. Just for you information, Friends of Park Lake will be posting within the next two weeks, signage along Park Lake Road sponsored by Friends of Park Lake that is encouraging people to please slow down. And secondly, Friends of Park Lake will be hosting our summer events this year. We will have our family bike ride on June the 10th, starting at eight o'clock at Wishwasher Park. We'll have a 10-mile ride, a 20-mile ride, and a 30-mile ride. Many of you remember Dan Stockwell, he now chairs, uh, the DLMAC, and so we're partnering with them. So this will be a practice race, a practice ride.
Judy, does this have anything to do with the agenda?
No.
Okay.
Just kind of FYI.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Well, I have one that came as an email because Ray Kopke couldn't be here. Oh, George, are you gonna? Nope, go right ahead. I'm waiting till last. Yo.
Interrupt you? Baker, I'm part of the road committee. Just wanted to make a comment about item 14A lowercase p, South County Line Road.
Oh, okay.
You guys are gonna discuss that. I don't know if I can last that long with you guys.
Hopefully you can.
Prior engagement. If you guys got the memo from Superintendent, there's an attachment there that shows the maps and whatnot. But the statement there, the property owner, the Meridian Township was trying to sell the vacant land that needs approval for future driveway access. North property owner's deed states that there is a public ROW intended to provide access for adjoining parcels. The township, Bath Township Order Trustee is being asked to consider to desire the County Road Commission to take over the remaining section of privately-built road to help elevate the access and maintenance of the issue. So my statements would just be this, if, uh, there might be something more going on at their end that obviously I wouldn't know about. Because if they wanted to, to just simply have that property have road access, they could just call the county and apply for a driveway permit, $100. So if the owner really needed access to that road, that would, that would determine whether they have access to the road or not, just by applying for that permit. And also, if the other larger lots want to develop that property down in the future, then I don't see why we should pick up a tab for something like that to, you know, because the standards are, it has to be asphalt and meet certain widths and 26 feet or whatever it is. Whatever their standards are, it's not gravel. Right now, it's gravel road. They do not take gravel. In history, they have taken it with gravel.
Right, okay.
But currently, they do not, in their books, as far as I know, have anything on there besides asphalt. So I just wanted to comment on that. I'm not for or against any projects, or I don't know of any projects or anything like that. It's just, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
And I appreciate our police acquire departments. That's not on the agenda, but I'm proud of them.
Alright, is there anybody else? I have one. Thank you, George, for that, appreciate it. This apparently came, same kind of thing, public comment. The reason that Mr. Kopke isn't here is because his wife came home from Cuba with COVID. So bless his heart, he decided that he would not expose us. He's not sick, but she is, at least at this time, he's not. But because she came home in that condition, he determined that that was the best thing for us not to come. So he sent me an email. Bear with me on this one. Says, "This document suggests a final and permanent solution for the purpose and definition of a non-motorized trail easement." Says the Park Lake Trail, traveling from Bath Parcel, and then he gives the number, "as known as a parking lot, trailhead to the north." I had pictures, but I did not know that we were getting the new setup, so, and who I was supposed to send it to, so I apologize for that. But our committee has, I think you've probably seen these before, but he attached them so that the committee members have them. Okay, um, traveling south, then southeasterly direction from Clinton County, again, a parcel number. Clinton County Drain Commissioner Hanses has stated that he is willing to undertake the legal drafting of this easement to settle this debacle once and for all for Bath Township citizens. Said easement would utilize the pre-construction water control structure improvement of 2014 that was constructed and paid for by the township's additional contribu- contribution of $166,881.90. This was a Clinton County resolution for 2013-20 for the purpose of such notarized, no, non-motorized trail construction. Said easement would travel from aforementioned tailhead south to Webster Road, utilizing the prescribed purported construction water control. For a minute, I thought you had a hand up. I was gonna say, okay, no, please, keep going. Water control beam shoulder, then southerly, south, south, south-easterly, passing the water control structure to the center line of highway dedication to all deed parcels outlining the Park Lake utilized legend, the legacy culvert. Okay, I'm sure that's, he would have been better off, he could have known where to put the pictures. The land bridge and the enter into the proposed park, Bath Township parcel, and again, he gives the number, where the aforementioned Clinton County parcel and Bath Township parcel join. I think for me, because I'm reading it and I have the pictures, the board has the pictures, maybe the best thing to do is to send this to the Drain Commissioner, so he also has it. Understanding he has his own legal counsel and they'll be working on it. But I think what the purpose of this and the pictures was to show a suggestion of where things are at and where they should be according to what our Drain Commissioner has promised he would do. So I will forward this, just so Ray knows that that's gonna be done. And our clerk has one, so she knows. I'm sorry, Judy, go ahead. Yeah, this was from Ray. Is that what the question is? Okay, I'm sorry. If there's a question, holler. But anyway, that's the email. So, from public comments, statement one, we'll go, I don't, yes, George? Sure.
I just wanted to make mention also that that, uh, that that road is, is a, has public access. It's not a public road, but it does have public access. So that, that lot, Meridian Township lot, should be able to get a drain across there for the driveway.
You're talking about the other one, not, okay, gotcha. To be clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, thank you, appreciate that. Well, public, oh, no, please, sorry if I...
Sorry, sorry, I'm late.
Buzzed in.
Um, I wasn't able to hear, be here last time. You guys talked about 6464 Slight Road. Corey Burdis, I own 6390, the adjacent property that you guys read my letter last time. I wasn't able to hear. Yep.
I was gonna say, I'm not sure, okay.
It's the, it's the special use permit that's on your...
Oh, the S, you're the neighbor.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Yep. Um, and I watched some of that video and some of the stuff she was talking about. I didn't really understand because what the, the information that I was given was off of the drawing that she submitted to the township.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
The owner next door.
Okay.
So the information that I was going off of, the trailer's gonna be basically flooded up to my property and up to my driveway. And I know that there's gonna be some, there were some changes that were gonna be submitted, and I don't know what the alternate was to that. And she said that they could adjust, you know, and move the trailer in front of the garage and things. But there's just still some of my concerns is that, um, on the, on the site, development site that was submitted, there had to be a minimum 200 foot for the lot size width. She's not at 200 feet, she's at 150 feet. And the way it was understood to me, was explained to me, was that the lot was made before that rule was made, which I understand, but it's still the rule. And that the rule on that, I believe, is for the buffering distance for someone to be able to stop to get into a business. That distance is not enough. So my, my concern is just traffic volume right there. I have pictures I should have submitted of cars backed up in front of my driveway, waiting to get in. So, I just, I'm very concerned about the traffic on that road.
Okay, the S U P, if I'm understanding, Miles is here. So obviously, you need to touch base with Miles.
Yeah, and I've talked to him on the phone.
Okay.
And he explained that to me, that that was, you know, the land site was made previous to the law, but the law is still the law. It's 200 feet, and she's not 200 feet wide.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it. But make sure you touch base again.
Yeah.
Okay. Because that's what we'll need. Okay. Now we'll go to item six, which happens to be with the county, state, federal, or any other agency, and I don't see anybody. So we'll move on to the consent agenda, item seven.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Item eight is approval of minutes. I have a quick question for that. Does anybody else have a question? Okay, my question is for the clerk. When you write the minutes, when you do this, make sure I'm understanding this, that there isn't any other comments that are put in, so there are no questions? When somebody has a comment about an issue, that's not put into the minutes? Is that? Yeah, it's the board minutes, that's what we're approving.
What do I miss?
Well, for example, you want me to give you an example? When you had the public art committee, there was no, or there's no question in minutes when people had questions with regards to a number of different things. So that's what I'm looking at. I just didn't know if that's what you did.
If we vote on it?
No, no, no. If someone makes a comment, for example, if Ryan makes a comment, or I make a comment, or Al makes a comment, is that put in? Is there a reason that those comments aren't put in?
If they're voting on them, would...
That's all we put, not comments, okay. No, that's, that's what I wanted to know. That's, okay, thank you. Alright, we have the approval of amendments, item eight. Minutes of the Board of Trustees, regular meeting on February 21st.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms., Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Item nine is the approval of vouchers. We have voucher A, well, A for 2022, and B for 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 and 2023 vouchers as submitted.
Second.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, item 10, for those that are following, it's a treasure report. It says, "None." None, okay. There is none. Alright. I'm up with your committee appointments. I'm gonna withdraw this, and the reason I'm withdrawing it is because I just found out before this went out, actually after this went out, not before, that Ms. Floyd does have an outer drive. She's building a house. Really a cute house, you guys should drive by it. It's a nice house. However, she is, she pays her taxes on time, like she's supposed to, but she's also voting in East Lansing, and I didn't know that. So even though she has an address, she still is voting in East Lansing. So at this point, I can't...
She's not a resident.
Yep. Well, she is a resident. She has her building, she pays her taxes, but she doesn't vote here. So that's the question, and that's why I'm gonna withdraw it for now until... It's, right now, she lives in a condominium in East Lansing. And again, she pays her property tax here, she pays them there. She's on outer drive, she's building the house, she's gonna live here, but she still votes. She hasn't changed her driver's license or her voting registration. So, at this point, that's kind of a muted issue. Okay, she was, she is really good. When she does finally, I'm gonna rope her. She would be very, very good. Okay, Township Committee reports with the changes. Thanks to Mr. Almarigi. Almarigi, I can get this. It's all Almarigi.
Jason Almarigi, thank you. Jason Almarigi, 6051 Cliffs Road. So Safe Routes to School, um, I, I wanted to give you an update. The committee submitted another grant application to provide programming next year. Some changes to that funding source. Just let me back up first. So we've been approved for two grants already. So we have a major grant with infrastructure built, our infrastructure that will be built in 2024. New sidewalks leading from Hunter's Crossing subdivision through Main Streets across the park to the elementary and middle schools with crosswalks there. ADA-compliant crosswalks throughout. So really excited about that. That comes with programming, so this pedestrian safety for K through middle school students. So that's the first grant. The second grant was, uh, supports programming for K to middle school students, currently ongoing. So it started this fall, this past fall, and it will commence September 30th of next, of this year. So we applied for additional funding that will support programming in between this year and the 2024 programming year. Some exciting changes to that. They now allow for funding for high school, high school students. And so we applied for just under $45,000 to support programming. That will support two part-time coordinators to deliver programs and services, as well as professional development materials for teachers to embed pedestrian safety within their courses. So we're very excited about it. I just wanted to also add that we have two partners in the township who are supporting that. Becca Slocombe, Parks Rec Coordinator, as well as Officer Hamilton. We unfortunately did not have an opportunity to adequately invite Becca to the grant ratings session. But Officer Hamilton showed up. He has been a phenomenal partner. So kudos to the Bath Police Department for their ongoing support for Safe Routes to School. Any questions about Safe Routes to School? Yes?
One quick one. The grant for $45,000 for your high school programs?
It's elementary, middle, and high school, so it's...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought you said high school, okay.
I did, so I, let me back up. New to this year is, we can now fund programming at the high school. That was not available in prior years, so...
Okay, the grants for 45.
Yep.
But it hasn't been, or it has been, or it has been paid, in other words. Is that $45,000 in the school budget?
Uh, so, no.
Okay.
So, so, um, we're currently funded for current programming. And that's, that's on a reimbursement basis, and I think that those funds add up to about $20,000. So it's $10,000 per school. So they've increased the amount per school to $15,000 per school and now allow high schools. So that, that's the difference for next year's grant. So what we've done so far for next year's grant is successfully submit an application. So these are competitive grant funds, and so we'll find out in the next month, two months, however long it takes them to review those projects.
So the school hasn't initiated any dollars until...
Uh, not for that third grant. The second grant, they've initiated those funds. Yeah. I apologize because it's confusing, because the, the grant that's getting funded last in 2024 was the first application that we applied for. The second grant is for the current set of programs occurring that has occurred from October 1 through now and will end September 30th of 2023.
Not October, but September of 2023?
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't know if that's the federal funding cycle.
Okay, nope. So we have one, one grant for 2023.
Yep.
This year, a second grant for 2024.
Yep.
Where does the $45,000 fall? In 2024?
23, 24.
23, okay.
So it's mixing federal calendar with the yearly calendar. And I'm sure we have also like a July 1 to June 3 calendar for other funding sources. Not related to Safe Routes to School.
None of them are...
Just is the fiscal years of the entities we're dealing with?
Yeah, I was going to say, that's when it's not related. It is related, it just isn't here yet, correct, or not?
No, I, I apologize. It's, it's not at all related to Safe Routes to School.
Okay.
Just acknowledging that there's multiple calendars to try to keep straight.
And, and multiple grants?
Three grants, three grants. So two, well, one has, one is currently being implemented. One, we have conditional approval, that's the large one, the infrastructure grant. And then we just submitted last week
Gotcha.
the third grant application.
Okay.
Are they going to allow infrastructure grant applications for high school? For the actual infrastructure sidewalk? Would that be something that we would be looking at doing?
I've not heard anything. I'll bring that up.
So right now, it's just programming?
Yeah.
But the, but the actual infrastructure, we're not there yet? Or they're not allowing it yet?
Yeah, so, I mean, they, they made the shift after we submitted and had conditional approval to funds, and I'm assuming that's a federal program change to allow high schools to be funded for this work. So we're excited about the high school. It's going to give us a couple opportunities. One opportunity is to make use of the, the nature trails between the middle and high schools as a part of Safe Routes. The second is that we're going to engage a youth advisory committee to the committee. So consisting of high school students and, and I think there's some community service hours that students can attend, but we're excited about having youth voice in a governance position for this work. Should help with ensuring that the program is exciting and relevant to students more than an old man like me. Any other questions about Safe Routes?
I hope not. It was painful, but thank you.
I pride myself on being painful with all this. So second update is Clint County broadband. So we had a meeting today. This is the first meeting after our last meeting, which was the meeting where we voted to approve Frontier as the partner. As you know, in your last meeting, there were some decisions that had to be made related to representation of the township. You made that recommendation. County commissioners approved it. So we had a pretty low-key meeting today. The majority of the meeting was concerns about who is actually applying for Robin funds. So these are the state-managed federal funds. There's something like $240 million in funds. And so this is a highly competitive program. It was discussed that Frontier will be the applicant with Clint County as just the named partner. And so the funds would be managed and organized by Frontier. There was some concern about whether the leverage that the county would have to ensure that the work that would be completed would be done well and meets the needs and expectations of the county. As I presented last time, Bath Township has no sites within the Frontier plan, so it doesn't really affect us. I think the part, and I'm not sure what the discussion item for today is, but the task force does not meet until May. So now that they've got their grants, their Robin grant applications submitted, or Frontier will be leading that, there, I don't have the sense that there's a strong push to be proactive in identifying additional funds. So that other areas of the township or county could get service. Looking closer at the map, it looks like Waterton, Watertown Township also is not being served. So, and then Dewitt Township as well. But Dewitt had previously been served through a different broadband funding mechanism a few years ago.
I always am the one, right? The, the letter, I want to make sure I'm understanding. The letter is what we initially determined to Clint County, correct? This letter that we have?
Our letter of intent.
Letter of intent, yeah. Oh, okay, thank you, yes.
Okay, so I'm the one.
So I, during the meeting, I did bring up a concern about how we allocated $400,000 of ARPA funds to serve the township. And with Frontier not offering to provide any new service to Bath, that was an issue for us. There was discussion about that. The discussion was that the county would not use our funds to support a initiative that had no benefit for our township. So, so they're aware of that? Sorry. They're aware of that. But, you know, aside from discussion, I don't know if there was any... There wasn't further discussion about, all right, so do they hold on to the funds for a later funding opportunity? So right now, there's, things are kind of on pause until they find out the results of the Robin funding.
His, well, historically, we ended up supporting and supplying money for SCUMA, for one of our participants, and that was in a resolution way back when. And I think the purpose of that, because eventually they ended up, you know, obviously paying their own fair share, but Bath Township took that piece. That's what I'm kind of looking at with this, and that's what I didn't know. So I'm still looking at, trying to figure out. You're saying that Frontier isn't any good, that it shouldn't be. So I think what you're asking, so correct me if I'm wrong. It's being asked that this $256,000 that we initially said we would do, we're no longer wanting to do that. Is that, does that sound correct? And when it says two times, that doesn't mean two times that to be 500,000, half a million? Total?
My understanding is that it is. If I remember correctly, this board voted to do a per household allocation that would match Victor Township's allocation. Victor Township, to remind you, poured 100% of their ARPA funds into broadband. And so we did some quick calculations to determine what that, what per household cost or allocation that they made. We matched that, and then if I remember correctly, it was Joe or Steve who suggested that we step up the plate and find some leadership among the townships.
I guess that's what I'm looking at.
Then we allocated a second amount of equal dollars pending actual work that was going to support Bath Township residents.
And I guess that's where I'm stuck. That, that's the part that I'm kind of looking at, because SCUMA has been very successful. And we put in money for them at this time. You can look at me, yes, we did. Look up the resolutions, 1977.
I'm not saying we don't, I don't understand how the sewer connects with broadband.
Well, it does.
That's my confusion.
No, you're confused. There's no connection other than Bath Township took the lead and went ahead as their thread in their societal commitment that they would do. So I guess that's what I'm kind of looking at. So I, I don't know, and you're smiling, so please help... No, please help me out on that, because it's something, if Bath Township isn't going to step up with their part of the thread to assist, realizing we don't get anything at this point from that. I don't know what that does in the future.
So, so I first want to thank you for bringing, connecting to the sewer, because that reminded me of a commentary that another task force member mentioned. And this is related to the choice of Frontier. So this committee member basically said that Frontier is the turd that won't flush.
Well, that's one way to put it.
And so if you have Frontier service, you probably understand that.
Now I get it.
But see, I have Frontier and have no issues.
So, but...
So I, I don't know.
But part of the history here is that Victor Township had applied for grant funds to support broadband infrastructure, and Frontier had blocked them.
Right.
Because they had, quote, plans in the near future to build out in Victor Township. So part of the concern is that, and what I've heard from the county road commission is that Frontier has pulled in excess of 200 permits to build throughout the county. And so the challenge there is that if another provider were selected by the county, and, and there was a preliminary award for that other provider, Frontier could step in and say, no, we already have plans to build, build out based on federal statutes. That would eliminate the funding opportunity, hence the turd that won't flush.
Do we know if there's any permits pulled for Bath Township by Frontier?
So I would, I don't, I can't answer that. I haven't asked for that information. I would guess that they probably have pulled broadly. So, but there's other permits that haven't pulled, so this might get really messy. So Stella Broadband has pulled permits as well for Bath and Victor Township, because they have a strong interest in serving these locations.
So what you're saying is that Frontier is basically blocking any other provider that would come in?
They could potentially be in a, a position to block funding. So we are estimating or guessing that the county went with them, chose the route of being a partner rather than someone who is... And again, this is pure speculation, so take that for what it's worth.
Okay. Based on what you're indicating tonight, that they won't meet again until May, I wanted to have a discussion here tonight based on whether or not we would continue to commit those funds as we had in our initial letter of intent. So what, what's your feeling on the discussion that needs to occur?
So I'd say, I, my recommendation is to plan on, I, I wouldn't pull the funds back yet because there's still work that needs to be done in terms of negotiating with the county. And it could be that Frontier may still be the best provider if they're going to do a heavy investment throughout the county. Can we incentivize them to build out infrastructure here? I don't know if that's my first choice, just based on the things I had specified, some concerns that I specified in the letter that I shared with you. At this point, I don't have the sense that the county is, is looking to spend town, any township allocation for this part, this particular partnership. They committed $3 million. Their commitments for the Robin application is 2.5. So I, so I think they're operating under the assumption that only county funds will be in service of this Frontier partnership and Robin build out.
I mean, all this time that was spent with Mr. Smiley is smitty, is for naught?
No, no, it's, it's, the county chose what they felt was the best provider for a county perspective. That unfortunately means that this is not the best for us. And so we need to look back and really think about and continue the conversations about who might be a better provider or set of providers that can service the multiple areas throughout the township.
Didn't we know that going in, that the county was going to do what was best for the county? I mean, yeah, I mean, thank you. I mean, that's, we, I mean, that's, I think we knew that, didn't we? Or not? I mean, are we assuming that...
Well, so, I, I mean, speaking only for myself.
No, well, you're the representative.
We assumed that because we are a part of the county, that a county-wide plan would have some benefit for us.
So that's never going to happen?
Well, I can't, no, it's, I don't know if it will never happen.
Okay.
Some of us who are more jaded in terms of the relationships that we've had may have different guesses. But I would say that, I mean, there will be other funding opportunities. The question is, where will the county go with those other? Will they seek to flesh out or build out in Bath, Watertown, and other areas that this particular grant will not be certified?
But it doesn't mean that we won't have another one, correct? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to understand, just because we don't have it today doesn't mean we won't have it tomorrow. Is that... Is broadband, is that a reasonable...
We won't have broadband today at work.
Ever? No.
But I, we will have broadband.
Okay.
The question is, how can we partner and invest to do that sooner rather than later? If that makes sense. So, so right now, with the county, the county's plan is, all their eggs are currently in one basket. That's the Robin grant funds that will not serve Bath Township. They are putting their work on pause for thinking about other funding opportunities until they hear about Robin funding. I don't, and then I'm not sure what they'll do after that. I can't say I have high confidence, but I do have high hopes.
Could you just tell me what Robin, tell the rest of everybody who's listening what that acronym, acronyms for me are? What does Robin stand for? Yeah, thank you. That's what I thought.
Okay.
I don't know if someone with a device can look it up really quickly.
Realizing opportunities with broadband infrastructure networks.
Realizing opportunities.
With broadband infrastructure networks.
Okay.
I understand why I don't remember it.
No, it's not a question. Acronyms are always a really interesting thing to do, just so people understand what that acronym means.
So in terms of the deliberation that you'll have for broadband, I mean, you'll have to make a decision. Do you want to pull the funds back? Do you want to keep them where they're at? Do you want to get a letter from the county saying that they will not allocate those funds until there's a project that will serve Bath Township?
I don't think they would know that, would they? Would they be able to?
Well, they should be able to make any commitment to how they utilize our funds.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of, you know, do we want to pull them back and then have firmer control?
And these are ARPA funds that we're talking. That's what I'm, okay.
Bath Township ARPA funds.
So is it two times? In other words, it's a half a million total, or is it...
I don't know what has been sent to the county. I heard that it was $400,000, but I, county does not, does not share documents on that level, the process.
Okay, so we'll take your figures. So we'll say $400,000 total.
The letter of intent is in your packet.
No, I have the letter of intent for the $256,064, which is what we allocated per household, because we figured that, that dollar amount, we came because there are households.
And there's two allotments.
Well, that's of the 200, that's what I'm asking, of the 250.
Is that 250 per household?
No, it's, it's total. It's $256,000, okay. Or no, I'm sorry, it's $256,064.
Per served, yeah.
So I don't know if the other part of the conversation here is discuss restarting a broadband task force or committee or structure within the township. Well, we have, but once the county got up and running, we put our eggs in the county's basket on the assumption that the county was...
So the planning commission dissolved the ad hoc.
I don't think there was any specific action. The planning commission didn't start the ad hoc.
No, the planning commission, it was given to them, but it still exists.
The planning commission has no role with the ad hoc or the broadband at all. We have not discussed that.
It's not a question of discussing. This board gave it to the planning commission.
I'm telling you, the planning commission has nothing to do with the broadband community. There's, there's a gap there, so...
Yes, there is a gap there.
The board had authorized the formation of a task force. That task force
Went to the planning commission.
Put their, their eggs into the county plan, and then...
Should I pull it up?
Please, yes.
Okay. No, Ryan and I are having a sidebar.
No, and that's mine.
You're muttering. I'm not having any sidebar.
Then don't answer me.
The plan was to submit some recommendations to the planning commission to then make some determination. to then make some determination on what to do next.
And that never occurred?
Because there was an ad hoc committee. It was said that it would go to the planning commission.
Yes.
So, okay, just so I'm understanding. Okay.
Any other questions for me related to broadband? Thank you.
Greatly appreciated. Okay, item thirteen on your agenda, introduction and disclosure for the Clinton, well, are we gonna redo? Or are you going, because it has Clinton County broadband initiative under you. So, are we gonna do that in addition?
I think this board needs to have discussion. Based on, based on what our letter of intent indicated, based on what Mr. Almarigi has provided us and the update that you have been given tonight, I think it warrants some discussion for how we are going to proceed.
Okay. Shoot, anybody got any comments they want to make? Because apparently... Okay, shoot, thank you.
I think Almarigi was right, that we should send a letter to the county and let them know if you're not gonna spend that money, that Bath Township has said they would give you if you did something for them. And if you don't do anything, the money will not come.
Okay.
And we'll keep it and work on our own area.
That ought to be interesting.
Uh, Marie?
No, I'm just saying that that ought to be an interesting...
You gotta look at the board commissioners and where they're located and where they're from. You got, I think, nine commissioners, right? Three are from the lower part of the township. Six are from the top part. The six part, the six bunch vote together. Bath, the Watertown are, have always been the ones that never got anything.
Then why did we go with them?
We went with them to hope that things might have changed over the last sixty years, and it hasn't.
Okay.
I can remember sixty years back, so...
No, I'm sure you can. I, see, I, I look at it a little differently. I look at it, again, for Bath, whether we have them or not, and I understand what you're saying. And our ARPA funds are here to do for the health and welfare, you know, of our people.
Oh, yes.
And part of that isn't the guarantee that we were going to get. Part of it is, that is a thread of our fabric for our society. So, if broadband is as important as what everybody says it is, see, I have Frontier. So, for me, I know Sheri has, she has problems. I don't have any problems with it.
I don't have any problems.
So, I don't understand exactly what the problem is with this. And I understand, you know, what Mr. Almarigi said. But I'm still looking, for me, I'm kind of looking at this as part of our commitment for something that may or may not happen. I'm assuming it'll happen. We're hoping it'll happen in the future. I'm not saying it has to happen today or tomorrow. That's kind of where I'm coming from with it, and that's what I'm kind of trying to work out.
Hopes to not get it done.
No, that's what...
That's what he just told us.
That's what the letter, this is no guarantee. I'm sorry, please.
I'd make a motion that we retract all offer of any funding to the county until Bath Township is affected by that issue.
These items are for discussion. Introduction and discussion is what they're under.
I know, I made a motion.
And what you'd like to do is move it.
That's his recommendation.
Yep, I get it. So, I'm gonna put down a recommendation to vote.
No, I made a motion.
That's right, and it was second.
Yeah, it's not a recommendation. I'm actually making the motion. Yes, that we rescind the offer of any funding to the Clinton County broadband initiative until that initiative is going to affect Bath Township residents.
You're still up there, so...
So, I, a couple of things to consider. I mean, I think we have already sent funds, we have not sent...
No, we have not. That's what I was asking.
Um, good.
So, we don't have to have a return check?
So, so, I don't, I mean, I, I think one of the decisions that you should make is whether or not you continue to support the county efforts on paper, not necessarily through funds. I think that there should be separate decisions there. You know, we're, one would be, you know, holding on to our funds until we have a better sense of what, that there's a county plan that will affect Bath. But the other is, are we still in spirits supportive of the county work? Because that will affect their grant application. So, I just, that's all I have to add.
Okay, except, don't go away. And there is a motion and a second. We'll be voting on it, so... But in, in that statement that you made, you're asking for two points. You're asking for, one, that the money be taken away. Two, that we send a letter to say, "We still like you guys, but we're not gonna support you financially until you decide that you're going to come to Bath and do." Is that correct? Did I understand that?
I believe that latter part is trustee Feeney Bliss's motion.
That was the motion to pull the money.
Yep.
Is that, okay.
So, but there's, I'll, I'll just do it by way of comparison. So, there are townships who wrote letters of support for the county plan without allocating any of their ARPA funds. So, the question is, do you want to go that route? Or do you want to exit the partnership through, through, so that's...
Which is, what was part of the motion?
Well, I don't, pulling the money back doesn't necessarily mean that you're pulling out of the partnership overall. So, I would just be explicit in that motion or have a second motion.
Sounds like you mean a delay.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like to me.
Contributing until we get some promise of function that's real for Bath Township.
So, I mean, I, I would agree with that. I would think, I mean, maybe having a conversation with the county administrator and Karen or, you know, myself and Karen or whoever, might be the best next step. Because they may say, well, you know, we don't have any intent on, you know, pulling funds from you because of the nature of what we decided, so...
I think the main thing to remember here...
Oh, no, go ahead.
Main thing to remember is we haven't sent them any money yet.
Correct. So, that's what our letter, so we're saying you guys are nice.
We could certainly delay sending them some money until they can show us what they were gonna do for, for us. Our initial intent was to make a financial commitment to them that says, "Yes, we support the broadband, and this is how much we're willing to bring." But we didn't send any money upfront because we didn't know what they were gonna do upfront. So, we're really in the driver's seat on this one.
So, the letter that you're, so I'm understanding. The letter that you're saying to send talks about the delay. That, in other words, we'll commit to, this is what I'm asking, we'll commit to X amount of dollars only if, so that's kind of, when you say you're in the driver's seat, that's, I don't know how else you put that, to say, whether you read between the lines or whether it's explicitly stated, that this delay will take place until you come to Bath Township. But my understanding, now, correct me if I'm wrong or right on this, they don't need our money. They already have enough to fulfill what they need. Is that correct? Okay, so...
For the Robin grant application process.
For this Robin grant thing. Okay, so, their grant process is okay. That's, that's in good standing. Doesn't make any difference whether we pay money or not. They're still gonna be able to move forward with it. So, I'm not so sure we're in the driver's seat with that in a way. Only because, well, that's, that's the, we haven't sent them money, but they don't need your money. That, that's the question.
Well, I got a question. In our first letter...
Yes, you may. Sorry.
Well, it says right here, "Written commitment to guarantee service within Bath Charter Township." So, we already said, only if they're committed to Bath Charter Township. We won't send the funds unless they commit to us. So, we already have a letter.
No, I understand that.
We already say that, so why do we need to send another letter?
I guess what I'm trying to understand is...
I guess that's where I'm confused. I'm new at this, so...
You can read, so that's okay.
I don't have an answer to that. I think if you wanted to make a strong statement, you could do a motion and votes in service of, you know, we're going to reserve our funds until we see something that will support the residents of Bath. I, I, I do wonder if, I, Kellerman is, you know, on point here in terms of holding off until we have some more conversations with what the county is looking to do.
So, trustee Feeney Bliss needs to amend his, his motion. Is that correct?
I'm not going to amend my motion.
Okay, then what he's saying is, if you'll have to read it again...
Ryan's gonna have to read it because I didn't catch everything.
Motion to...
My motion was to rescind our letter and offer of funding until Bath Township is part of the service area of the Clinton County broadband initiative.
Which is pretty much what this already says. The letter that is already there pretty much says that.
No, it's a little stronger, I think.
Okay, well, that's, so it's reiterating to them where our stand is.
We're not happy with the decision you made to take Bath out of the...
Equation?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, all right, go ahead. We're still in discussion.
If, if I may ask a question of trustee Feeney Bliss. Are you, is the intent of the motion to exit the partnership as well?
Will it be part of the partnership?
So, so, as disappointing as this particular first round of grantmanship is in terms of non-service for Bath, it is an open question on future funding sources. Will, uh, be utilized to service Bath Township?
I thought you were saying they said that they were not going to pursue more funding.
I can't, I can't say that they plan on or they don't plan on. I, I, there wasn't discussion about that. They're pausing the task force for a couple of months while they find out what happens with Robin. There's two routes that that could go. One, they're funded, and then the county, you know, has a gold star, and then they move on, close down the task force, and then break where we were left. Or they may say, "We're funded, now let's go up to the next funding or another funding source to fill out the gaps that's our first round."
Is all of the county's allocated money tied into the Robin grant?
They have, I, I think they'll have about a half a million dollars left after that, out of, out of three million. So, they're, they're anticipating two and a half million that will go into the Robin funding. Now, they may also not get funded through Robin, and then it's a whole different ball of wax. And so, what I wouldn't want to do is, as much as, as I have critiqued the purpose and voice on the task force, you know, there's still some voice to be had there. If we fully exit out of the partnership, then we effectively no longer have voice for the county work. And I don't know, I, I can be simultan, I am being simultaneously critical of that task force in the county, but also hopeful that we can accomplish something with the partnership, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion?
It sounds like we want to leave the door open if they service our township and not shut it forever, not let them think we're shutting it forever.
That's what the motion, you have, so, if you will reiterate the motion, because that's not what I heard, but say your motion again, or your, what you wanted, your motion.
My motion?
Yes.
The fourth time, is to rescind the letter.
I don't care, you have to do it five times, that's...
I'll do it five or six, just so you get it, Marie.
Thank you. Not me. It's not me. I know exactly what you said.
Well, if everyone's got it, I don't think we need to rescind it.
Everybody got it?
To go over again.
Okay.
So, what we can do after this, if we want to be part of the partnership, is we can, I'm sorry.
I didn't say anything.
You did, actually. Uh, we can enter a letter into the partnership that, that says we still want to be part of the partnership if and until Bath Township is served, without having any specific money allocated. This will allow us then to take this money that we have sort of allocated but not restricted and spend it if we want to on Bath Township activity, without having it tied up in case something were to move forward with the county at some other time.
Would you leave the motion in, just so everybody understands what they're voting on?
I think we all got it.
Go ahead.
I may not have it written down all the way. I'll be honest with you.
Nope, that's, so we take a vote. So, go ahead.
Ms. Wilson? Yes. Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
No.
Mr. Feeney Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Speller-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
No.
Soon as she's done, so that means it's passed, correct? Okay, so the motion passed. Yes.
So, I would move that we submit a letter to the county broadband initiative saying we are supportive of their efforts and will consider allocation in the future should that, those efforts touch Bath Township.
Things touched a benefit.
Benefit. Good, good change from Sheri, to benefit Bath Township residents directly.
Third.
It's already here. Ready? Go ahead, shoot. I'm sorry. What's the second? Sorry, I missed that.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Got it. Oh, I'm sorry, no, I was saying who's second in the motion.
I'm second.
Second, the second motion, so...
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Feeney Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Speller-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Superintendent, do you have any other questions?
I don't at this time. Thank you.
So, we're going to move then from thirteen unfinished business. Items for introduction and discussion, small b, public access easement by Clinton County Drain Commissioner.
Thank you. After the last board meeting during which Mr. Kotke had made a statement as to some efforts by the Clinton County Drain Commissioner on our behalf, I contacted the Clinton County Drain Commissioner, Phil Handses, as you know, and he provided me with this update so that I could share this with the board as to exactly what his efforts were. If you read through the memo, after the special board meeting, he felt that an easement would be necessary across the county property for the trail to be constructed or to even allow public access. And I brought this issue back to you tonight, and I see that we, we had comments by Ms. Gardi and then another by Mr. Kotke that may play into this, that if you are interested in having this effort moved forward, I would contact the drain commissioner and let him know that. But this is, this was intended for discussion, but...
But?
Rules are being changed all the time, so...
Yes, they are.
We can entertain action if that is warranted by the board.
Anybody got a question?
This is a totally new route then.
This would be, this would be across the drain commissioner's property, yes.
Right, it wouldn't go across where it was gonna go and then across the dam.
My understanding here is that it would be across the county property and not where it was before.
But it hasn't been abandoned, so it's all county property. Has it been abandoned?
The county property wasn't going to be abandoned.
That section. That section, because that's, you're asking the exact same question I did. It says across the county property. County property is what?
They own the property, but it's Bath Township property.
No, it's county property.
Well, they...
I was going to say that's... Because it says across the county property.
That's where the water control structure is.
Right, you're talking about the east side. And my question for this has been, the county property is the whole piece, because they haven't abandoned that.
No, it wasn't ever the whole piece. There's, there's...
Well, then across the county property for a trail, meaning you're talking about the burb, the east side.
Correct.
Or the right side or left side, whatever you want to look at. So, shouldn't it say that instead of across the county property?
No, this, these are Mr. Hans's words.
Well, of course, yep, I understand.
I, I copied this and adjusted it for he and I and all those things, but these are, these are his words, not mine. So, he's indicated it would be across county property.
Marie, I thought your idea of forwarding Ray's recommendation to the Drain Commissioner was a good one, because ultimately, we're not going to choose where on the property the easement is going to be. The Drain Commissioner is with his legal team. But I think if we pass this on with a strong recommendation from Bath Township saying, here's how we would like to see that, then he and his legal team can perhaps put that into work.
So, you're suggesting we send our own letter?
I mean, or just hit forward on Ray's email.
Okay, so you're thinking that Ray's email is okay to do?
Yeah, I mean, as long as the rest of the board's comfortable with that. But rather than us trying to like parse out where on the property it should go, it really isn't our property, and we won't get the final say in it.
I, Mr. Hanses is in possession of the survey that was conducted, the results of that survey, as is the road commission, of course. I, I don't disagree if, I think you're speaking to... The, the back, the third page, which is the blue. Is that correct?
That's part of Ray's email, right?
I was asking, yeah, this, I, I didn't get his email, so I have this in front of me.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was on our desk when I came in here.
Right.
Okay, mine, mine looks different than yours, apparently. Okay.
You should have the same, everybody should have the same thing, the larger...
Well, I have a second page that has the blue and the red.
Yes, that's what we said.
But...
I don't realize, I could have put it up. Yeah, these two.
Yes.
Okay. So, what the suggestion is, obviously, we're, I mean, we're forwarding it anyway, but forwarding to Mr. Hanses.
I, I think that we would ask the Drain Commissioner what his recommendation would be and see a proposed, a proposal from him.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with that, Karen, but we, we could forward this as a suggestion.
Right, oh, no question. You can't demand that, he's got his own attorney. Okay. So, we should wait for him to come back and kind of help us out with this?
I don't have a problem with that either.
Okay.
But isn't he the decision maker? Like, why would he recommend something to us to then recommend it back to him?
Because it's their property, that's exactly right, well...
Well, he's saying if we want to propose, if we want to proceed with this, so I imagine that he has an idea in his head of what an easement might look like and where it might run through. I don't know if it's the same as Ray's or not the same as Ray's, so...
So, we need to wait for him?
So, I'm asking if you, if you're interested in that, I could obtain that from him, what he sees. He could render a, a drawing for us, and I could bring that back for the next meeting.
Is there some way that he could be here to...
I could invite him, certainly could.
I mean, that's, that would make sense, to have him here, as long as he's making the determination as to what, okay, no. So, what are you looking, what do you need?
Nothing, I'll invite him and, and ask him to, on our new large screens, to show us what his idea of implementing...
Actually, that's very cool.
A trail would look like in the area, or an easement, excuse me, not the trail, easement.
Okay, so I'm going to put to wait. Okay. All right. Does that sound reasonable? Okay. Now, we're on thirteen B, items for action, and we're to go into closed session. So, this is under the Open Meetings Act, permissible, under print H, to consider material from, one of these days, I'm going to ask you, from dissemination or disclosure by the state or feds, the federal statute, police chief's employment agreement. Action item is to go into closed session.
I make a motion to go into closed session under Open Meetings Act permissible purposes to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, the police chief employment agreement specifically.
Second.
Can I ask a question before we vote?
Sure. That's what we're supposed to do.
Is he supposed to be, any, not him, but anyone whose contract is being discussed, are they supposed to be invited to this, this meeting and/or the closed meeting? Because I read it and read it and read it, and I thought he was supposed to be officially invited. No, we leave him, so, any?
Because it's not a, like, an HR review where we would be making determination based on his behavior. That's the carve-out, when he can ask to be in, any employee, not just him.
Yeah, any, that's what I said.
But into closed session.
Was he invited to this meeting?
I've had previous conversations with him, and I'm aware that you contacted him and, and had a conversation with him, which is wonderful. I'm glad you did that. And so, I've had a conversation with him, and he's aware of the item.
Okay, but so they never are allowed to come into closed meeting when it's a contract discussion, that's what...
Well, ultimately, we're going to enter, depending on how this goes, enter into negotiations, and you don't typically invite the person you're negotiating with to hear the strategy with which you're using negotiation.
Yeah, you do, I've been there.
I, I thought you did, but I read, I read it.
Not in any good union discussion, the management needs to have...
He, he indicated to me he felt no need to be here.
Okay, well, I just wondered, that's, that's my question, is legally, should they be invited or not?
Okay. Not.
Right, good to go, call for the closed session.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Feels Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're officially in closed session. Sorry about that, vibrates. We're going to have to figure out what to do with that, aren't I? Like, hit the, first it's not loud enough, then it's too loud, and then this thing vibrates.
We are.
Turn on the music. See if, see if I can remember this.
He'll be right back.
We have one missing, so hang on.
Good job.
That didn't work either. I keep, okay.
Wasn't as bad.
No, but everybody felt it, so, all right. We are now officially back in from closed session. We have an action item related to closed session. So is there a motion? There's not a motion?
I don't think they're quite ready yet. I'll make a motion to...
Thank you.
Enter into negotiations to... Um, let me start this again. I'll make a motion to have the superintendent enter into a final contract with our release chief.
Second. Any discussion more than what...
Question, do we want to recommend how many years?
Pardon?
That was a part of the discussion.
It was not part of the discussion.
I didn't catch the second.
Al.
Thank you.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Phewas Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chalender, yes. Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that passes for those who are keeping track. Item fourteen, new business. You've been so patient with this. Okay, special use permit. Where's...
We have miles.
I was gonna say miles. I was looking for ya.
Okay. So the item before the board tonight is an application for a special use permit for a home business. This application is for a property off of Slate Road. It's in the rural district of the township. The exact address and all site details were included in the packet as part of the staff report. So just want to go through a couple of high level things about, you know, I don't think these come around too often, so it's probably worth covering some background on what a special use for a home business is. So under the definition section of the zoning ordinance, there's two definitions that are kind of pertinent here. So the first is home business and the second is home occupation. So in this particular site's situation, we, you know, I spoke with the zoning administrator early on when we first were doing this and first we came on, you know, got on township staff's radar. And then we also, you know, had a conversation with the planning commission chair. And it was determined by all three parties involved that this did meet the bar of a home business. This was not a home occupation. Now, the current definition, you know, doesn't, it doesn't have very clear cut standards on what exactly a home business is versus a home occupation. They're sticky definitions. It's hard to determine what is what. And that's because of the nature of a home business. But in our talks with the planning commission about what a home business is, about how to pin down what is a home business versus a home occupation, kind of what we kept coming back to is it all comes down to scale. Scale of economic activity happening on the site. In a home business's case versus a home occupation's case, one of the primary factors that, you know, has been discussed leading us in the direction of a home business is the amount of commerce happening on site, traffic happening on site, economic activity in general happening on site. So it was determined that this land use did have a fair amount of that economic activity happening on site. So now that we've kind of covered some of the general nature of a home business versus home occupation, I think it's worth reading within the home definition. There are a number of standards, it's subsection A through N on standards for home business currently. I'll read A. It says, "A home business may be permitted by a special use permit in all zoning districts." So that's what kind of led us, and by us I mean me and Bert Gale, down the road of saying, hey, we think we have a home business here. How do we want to go about, you know, processing this one? What does this process look like for review? And that is why and how we kind of got over this board tonight. So the home business in question is, I would call it a baked goods and coffee trailer.
It's just a business stand.
Baked goods and coffee stand.
Just the baked goods.
Yeah, okay. Just the baked goods, okay. And that's been, you know, a learning process for us to know exactly what we're reviewing. As a home business, unlike a commercial business, it's a little bit harder to pin down exact land uses. Much more open to interpretation. We have to actually get with the home business owner and determine what exact activities they're doing. The process for us gathering information isn't as transparent and as clear as reviewing something like, let's say, a Big B's coffee or an Ace Hardware. It's not as cut and dry. Um, okay, so... Hold on, just give me a sec here. Sorry, just got a lot to add. Okay, so during the review of the planning commission for the site plan review, we went through all standards A through N. And it was the site plan that was submitted to the township was actually amended twice by the applicant to meet those standards. We've also had a good conversation at the planning commission of how to evaluate these standards for moving forward. Tonight, during public comment, one standard was also brought up, which was the minimum lot frontage and lot width standard for the rural zoning district, which is 200 feet. As it was alluded to, I think by the individual making the comment, it was stated by me when that concern was raised to me via telephone that I said it was a lot of record. And so just to clear up maybe any confusion there, a lot of record is a very common term, mechanism, whatever you want to call it, in the planning, zoning, land division industry. So what that basically means is zoning standard has been implemented, something like 200 feet minimum lot width. But there's a bunch of properties in said township, city, municipality, whatever it is, that can't meet that 200 foot standard because they were developed prior to that 200 foot standard being in place. So those are called lots of record. Now, lots of record are still buildable lots. And so what that means is if somebody comes and they want, they have a lot that has a minimum frontage requirement of 200 feet, but they're currently at 150, they can still build a single family home on that lot, even though they don't meet the 200 foot requirement. Now, if a lot of record, let's say, wasn't a thing, and it is a thing in any municipality I've ever worked in, and I, to the best of my knowledge, it is a thing in any municipality in the United States. If it was not a thing, we would be in a much deeper housing crisis than we currently are in this country because we have a lot of non-buildable parcels. Many of the sheds, decks, fences we approve in the township would not be able to meet that standard, looking at half of the Park Lake area. So it's very important that a lot of record is a thing. It's very important that a lot of record is treated the way it's always been treated in this township for practical and legal reasons. Other than the 200 foot requirement, it was, there was no other standards that it was found that this parcel or this proposed business operation couldn't meet. Now, of course, with that being said, the whole point of zoning and land use planning is to reduce conflicts between land use. Talked about that here before. We have an interesting land use that's being proposed here, a home business. Is my belief, and I wasn't here when this language was written, so I'm inferring a little bit, but it's my belief that there's a certain spirit in that township that especially, let's say, in the northern part of the township, people do very interesting land uses with their property. People have, you know, on their personal residence, backhoes, they chop wood, they store farm equipment, they, you know, work in their back forty and their pull bar, making chairs that they sell on Etsy. I think that's always been in the spirit of that township. And that's what leads me to believe that this township has such language as a home business is permitted in all zoning districts. So with that being said, you know, one of the primary jobs of the planning commission is to mitigate conflicts of interest or conflicts between adjacent land uses. The planning commission attempted to do so in this case. They, you know, required certain conditions of the site. Most of them had to do with onsite signage, which they, some of their conditions were to reduce the current onsite signage and then also limit the temporary signage to only during hours of operation. Some of their other conditions had to do with parking and not allowing parking on streets to the best of the applicant's ability because as any business owner knows, sometimes it's really hard to control what your customers do. I'm sure we've all been to Myers. There's been a giant snow mound and there's a Jeep Wrangler parked up on the snow mound. I'm sure Myers doesn't condone that behavior, but I'm sure it's hard for Myers to regulate. So we're trying to, the planning commission is trying to create standards for this special use permit that says the applicant will do everything in their ability to prevent people from parking on the street because that was our real fear when this land use got on the radar of township staff is people are going to park on the street there on Slate Road. It is a high mile an hour speed limit there. Somebody will open their car. It is quite hilly. They'd open their car door. Somebody would be going too fast. Somebody could get hurt. So we did feel it was really necessary to emphasize creating signage and directional signage on the property itself to get people onto the driveway, moving the stand in a way that creates more ample parking on site, getting people on there, letting the exchange of commerce happen and people being able to safely leave the site. So after a couple of meetings of talking about the pros and cons of this type of land use and the mitigating techniques, it was finally recommended by the planning commission that the special use permit be approved by the board of trustees with the conditions included in the staff report. And the plot plan slash site plan was approved by the planning commission for this home use. Do you have any questions?
Of course. My only question that I have is, are you operating this for this particular project under the new language or the old language?
We're operating under the current language. And it has been...
Current, okay.
And just to clear up, because I think that's a good question, has been a little bit of a point of confusion among, I would say, the public in general that there's language where currently we have on the books, which is the definitions I was talking about in standards A through N. But just before this applicant got on the township's radar, the planning commission was already making amendments to home-based businesses. So for this applicant, that was a little confusing, I feel like, because we're currently working through how we're thinking about these things as they're applying. But for the planning commission, we actually saw it as a real educational opportunity through this project and it really helped us understand where some of the holes in this process might be as we were seeing an applicant move through. So that's, and I don't want to speak for the planning commission, but I think it's been beneficial.
How long has she been in business?
Well, that's a good question. We started about, about, like, four...
This year?
Twenty twenty two.
This last year?
And, and you have remained inactive since we've been in talks with the township. And they did that willingly. That was, you know, we appreciate them working in good faith with the township as we move through this process.
I'm sorry, I have one more. When you mentioned it was on your radar, so that's complaint-driven?
It was complaint-driven, yes. We received a formal complaint. Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm writing. Ring your bell. Please do.
Now, the gentleman who was here in that, he complained about parking and getting out of his driveway. Has that been given care of?
We feel like we have mitigated the parking. Unfortunately, the location of the trailer and proximity to his property now, it meets all of our standards of setbacks from the township and that's why they've amended their plot plan twice. However, our standards do require that, that table where the, the temporary table where the economic activity is taking place, actually our standards pushed it closer to his property. And that's one of the big gaps that we've seen in reviewing the home business language. We're hope, the hope right now, and this has been another point of confusion, that is once our home business standards are amended to, you know, we've seen some of these things that it looks great on paper, as some things do sometimes, but in reality, it was a whole different thing.
Right.
We're hoping that once we make those changes, which I hesitate to put a timeline on any ordinance change ever, but I would say maybe two months, we're hoping that at that time they'd be able to amend their plot plan and push the economic activity farther away from the site. Either way, we don't think it's to, in the planning commission's opinion and in my opinion, I realize whenever you're doing any land use, adjacent properties are always very hesitant to change. I think that's just human nature. We all like change with people. I think that's just human nature, you know, like changeable people. But in my opinion and in the Planning Commission's opinion, we don't feel like the scale here is too overdone where it would negatively affect the use of the property. And we feel like there's appropriate setback that there won't be harms in terms of the actual operations or definitely in terms of their land, the value of their land, which is the metric that planners use for when harm is big to a.
And that's the old language?
Under the old language.
Okay.
We feel like under the new language it'd be even better. And we'll work with the applicant once our language is in place, doesn't end the problem.
But I, um, so I, the only way that it was, I'm out there, I'm kind of rolling usually on a Friday's, sometimes Fridays, uh, holiday, and Saturdays and Sundays, so basically two days a week. And the only time I could see that being a problem for the neighbor that was here was the lady didn't park on the side of the road between our property and the property that would found a problem, but we did ask her to, and it's the driveway. And then since that became a problem, we had put up some signage saying in the parking. So I really had no problem, because I'm always out there, no problem asking somebody to do it. And, um, we only had three people do it, park on the road, one on his side, and two between our house and, um, Tom Decker's house, and we backed them to move. It wasn't, I had no problem with that, but there's only been three instances of that happening.
Traffic.
And since then, we had put stuff up, signage up, so.
Yeah. The traffic down that road is pretty fast.
It is fast, um, and what, like I said, we've had everyone pull, all of the cars pull the driveway. Um, and we just have a turnaround in our driveway and, um, for the most part, everyone has pulled in, backed up, turned around. It's pretty, it's large enough to make you turn around. But as far as blocking anyone's driveway, the only thing I could see was that one lady who was, didn't block the driveway, but it was, had been a difficult for him to see what we did ask for, and she didn't come through. And then since then, there's been signage, so you couldn't park in most of the road or stuff.
Yep.
So parking was part of it.
Directional signage was part of the conditions. And just like with commercial business ventures, we find directional signage really helps because if they've never, just like you pull into McDonald's, you've never been to a double drive-through ordering lane, if there wasn't directional signage to help some people figure out where they're supposed to go, I don't think most people get it, but there is, so directional signage helps them.
Quick question. So basically, if I'm understanding, the old language is what this S U P comes from?
Mm-hmm.
The new language is alleged to be coming, which I've seen that, which-
We're working on it.
Yeah, boy, are you working on it.
Yeah.
That's really true. Um, so when the S U P, if it's agreed upon, if this is what the board agrees, that the S U P is to be in effect, is that what's the old language or the new language?
So, to be, and that's a fair question, to, to be clear, even under the new language, this, a business of this scale and type would still be considered applicant for a special use permit for a home business.
Okay, no, I understand.
But under this current language, if a S U P is granted by this body, the S U P will stand and live with the land.
Okay.
So they would-
With the old language?
They would be, yeah, they would be good under the old language. They would be good under the new language, however, we would ask them, hey, we have this new language in place, this could actually improve, set your site layout, would you feel comfortable coming in and amending your plot plan?
Resubmitting.
They actually wouldn't have to resub, you would have to resubmit administratively. We're talking about the movement of a temporary table that's collapsed on there, so it can be handled administratively. They would not come back.
So it wouldn't come back to the Planning Commission or the board?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Nope. That's, thank you. Any other questions? Or am I the only one? Come on, guys. You gotta think of something. I'm the only one. Apparently not. So, do you have a motion?
What's the discussion?
This is for discussion.
There isn't any. So the motion?
It is an introduction and discussion.
Yeah, it's just introduction and discussion.
Okay.
So, can more-
I know, but we did the other and voted, so I guess that's, so there is no question, no, we did. That's, the items for introduction, we ended up voting, so this new business item of discussion, so you don't want to vote on it. That's okay. All right.
It'll come back in the next meeting.
Okay, so it'll be March twentieth, I think. Is that right? Is our next meeting March twentieth?
I think so.
Okay.
If that's the third Monday.
I think that's right. Okay, so March twentieth. Okay. All right, apparently for discussion and introduction is the item B as a void under fourteen new business. This is the one that we've had discussions before, or we will be having it, for this South County Line Road request.
Correct. Thank you. Um, I was contacted by Eleanor Cohen, um, who's here with us tonight. She is the real estate agent. I don't know if she's representing the buyer or the seller?
The seller.
The seller, thank you. That's in Meridian Township. Um, and brought to our attention, as well as the Clinton County Road Committee's attention, um, the issue of South County Line Road. Um, if, like you, I was very unfamiliar with this neck of the township, so I had to do a little bit of research. I provided maps for you to hopefully understand better the site, um, which is along Tower Avenue. Um, north of county, South County Line Road is Bath Township, south of County Line Road is Meridian Township. So you have, the first map is an up-close version of the area that would be impacted by this change. The second map is just, I pulled out on the map so you could see better the surrounding area. Um, and the third map is just showing you the parcels that are in Meridian Township on the southern portion of the road and that, I'm guessing the parcel that we're indicating and talking about is, is, um, zero two eight, um, which is currently owned by Darwin and Danielle Rains, if that's correct. Thank you, Ms. Cohen. So, the request has come, um, that this area is almost the opposite of South Webster Road in that a portion of it is private and the seller is asking us to, the seller for Meridian Township is asking us to take it back as public road. And so we are being asked to consider, um, by the Clinton County Road Commission, who's also involved, um, if we took over the remaining section, um, we would have to concur with their, um, belief that it should be taken over. So both of us would have to concur. Um, one of the problems that exists here is that this road, because it's gravel, does not currently meet county standards for taking back a road. And Chair of the Road Committee, George Baker, who is still here, indicated that earlier. There really is no process for taking back a gravel road, um, because they usually don't. Um, usually roads we take back are meet, um, high standards of quality so that the township does not have to invest money shortly after taking it back to, to maintain or improve the road. Oh, thank you for pulling that up. Um, I did think, wow, I just looked up there and saw it, so. Um, so Mark Trotter, um, in early February, had provided some language, um, that proprietors who desire variations from these requirements may submit requests in writing to the Road Commission and that their board, um, in cases where it considers the request, um, may waive the individual requirements. So, and there being none, there are no forms for them to take it back, just the request. And like I said, we would have to concur. What Mark did provide for us tonight is the reasons to accept or the reasons not to accept, um, which I felt he communicated so well that I just copied and pasted his, um, work and gave it for you here tonight for consideration. So we, we do have Ms. Cohen here, we have George Baker here, if there are any questions, we do, I invited the Road Commission, but they weren't able, not able to attend. Um, but certainly I could communicate with them if there were additional, uh, questions for them or see if they could be available next time we meet.
Is that on the side of the ground?
Oh, okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And your name, sir?
Yours.
Okay, thank you.
And that's on the south side, correct? Okay. Somebody said something about you can't get a driveway permit on a gravel road. Uh, I live on a gravel road and there's permits all over the place.
So-
I have to get one soon.
Because the deed shows that there's a public right-of-way, um, the Meridian parcels in question have access to the road right-of-way and the, um, County Road Commission felt that a driveway permit could be issued.
I'd like to hear from the attorney, if possible.
She's not at the attorney, she's a real estate agent.
Real estate agent.
Yes. If you could come to the podium.
Would I do the podium, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Eleanor.
God. Sorry about that.
So, I'll just kind of explain it. The first fifty, 158 feet are maintained currently by Clinton County and then there's a sign that says road ends. And then there are currently five more driveways past that and potentially a sixth driveway. And then there's a little cul-de-sac turnaround at the end. I've measured with the surveyor's measure from the property that my client's selling goes right to here. So I meant that's from there up were 320 feet. There's a total of 507 feet that is a private road with full public access. So the main reason that this came up is that the gentleman to the north, Mr. Morley, that owns the property there, and then I think this is a small rental property, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um, his father owned a lot of land behind there previously. His deed states that it's a private road that has to be privately maintained, but it has full public access. So he's been doing that for, he's in his nineties, I believe. He's gotten upset when we've sent, we had a small block building that had to be torn down and he got very upset because they were hauling trailers over the road and he was going to have to smooth it back out, so they, you know, went back and told him they would bring their Bobcat and flatten the road back out. But he's been maintaining it for a very long time. And I just know with the construction of a home there and just now there'll be six different residents, it just doesn't seem right that he should be, there's no private road agreements, there's nothing in anyone's deed, his deed does state it's a private road with full public access and he's been maintaining it. So we're just trying to alleviate his frustration and everyone, you know, make it more fair for all the residents. So it was my, you know, I started by talking to Clinton County because I really didn't know whether being Ingham on the, you know, it's a county line road, so, you know, with two counties, and found that it was Bath's road.
Can you show us approximately where the, the public road ends?
It is right about here.
Okay, thank you.
And so I don't really, I don't know for sh, like, I haven't gone out there when there's been a ton of, so, I, you know, I think you mentioned that occasionally the snowplow may just go all the way to the end and turn around?
Yeah.
Then come back up?
Mr. Trotter from the Road Commission indicated that that's what occurs.
So, I mean, he said we could continue on as using the full public access, but it just seems odd that that's how it's, you know, it's been going on for so long. I just was trying to come up with a more reasonable solution for everyone.
Actually, that makes sense. Go ahead, Eleanor.
Why did Meridian Township turn it down?
Oh, they say they have no rights to the road. They, I mean, in terms of maintaining it?
Yeah, you want us to take it back?
They, well, they said that road is in Bath Township and-
The whole road is in Bath Township?
That's what they told me, two times, I called twice, and they said the owner, my seller had gone in also and talked to them and that the, it's not like a 50-50 road, it's fully in Bath Township. And that's how that first 158 feet is maintained. It's Bath Township with funds coming from Clinton County. You're paying Clinton County.
That's a drain, which-
Yeah.
This is the Helmut farm?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
The end of it.
It's a sod farm.
Used to be malls?
Yeah, yeah, that's this gentleman's name in that house right there.
Yeah. All right, so I'm, just so I'm understanding, drain isn't the question. What we're looking at is the east-west road, the county road, which is-
The white line.
Right. The county, okay, so I'm, okay.
Yes, this county line road right there.
And that's the 158 feet from here.
From here, Tower Road.
Tower to 158.
Just about this driveway is that 158.
Which belongs-
Well, I mean, the whole, yeah. That's currently maintained.
Okay. And then from that point, all the way over, it's not maintained?
To here.
Yes, it's not maintained.
From there down, it's considered a private road with full public access, but private maintenance. And this gentleman owns these two properties?
This, right, is saying no because he has a sod farm. I, I, yeah.
Because he maintains it, he thinks, he owns it.
But not the sod farm.
That's not the sod farm.
But that's not the sod farm.
The sod farm's over here.
Sod farm.
On the other map, he owns these.
Basically, what we're looking at is that 158, because this is very similar to what I have, because I'm also on a gravel road, which I don't mind at all, other than when I take it to be cleaned, people always say when you're cleaning, so you live on a gravel road? Yep. But what I'm looking at here is, if I'm understanding what you're saying, north would be Bath and then south would be Meridian Township.
Correct.
Okay? That's kind of what I have with Victor and Bath Township and then the dirt road. So, I guess my question, that's why they ended up coming to us, was because Bath Township is half-
The road's all in Bath Township. The road's all in Bath Township.
Is what they're saying, that's not a, see-
Well, Clinton County, Mark Trotter agreed to that.
Yes, okay.
And we pulled all the deeds, we drew it out and- But they want to sell this property and put it driveway onto this property, which-
Not just one, they have enough there to put lots of driveways.
It's an acre and a half, but it's currently- All being bought by one single family.
Is that what it is, the one? And that's in Meridian Township?
Because it's this-
Not in Bath, but they're claiming because we own the road, or it's in Bath Township, in Clinton County, that's the reason why you have to come to Clinton County to be able to say simply because Bath Township alleges to own-
Yes.
The whole, okay.
We have questions, just so you're aware. I'm sorry, I know you're-
No, no.
Questions. Everybody's got their hand up down there.
They do. I'm focusing on, sorry about that.
Is it my turn? Okay.
I'm sorry to say, but yes.
If the, if the road isn't the county line on that map, where is the county line?
It is the county line.
Oh, so Meridian owns-
So we own-
Everything is, south is Ingham County, everything north is Clinton.
But we own the road a hundred percent.
Yes.
So all 66 feet is-
Just below.
Yeah, that's unusual.
It's unusual.
It is unusual.
It is.
I, I understand maps, I don't have the answer to my question. Where is the county line on that map?
White line.
Like it says, South County.
There's another question.
Right there, the white line.
The white line, the road is the county line.
No, the road's above it. The road's on the, on the north of that white line, correct?
All right, I see.
According to Clinton, yeah.
I guess.
In the old days, the surveys weren't very accurate.
No, not.
Sometimes the real line is not where they thought it was. I know, it's normally the center of the road or 33, yeah.
So looking back in front of you, was Meridian Township involved in this?
We approached them and they said they had no ownership of the road whatsoever and that we should be talking to Clinton County and then Clinton County told me I should be talking to you.
Okay, that's fine, I'm just trying to follow the whole process.
Yes, yes.
So basically, the entire road then is in Bath Township?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Huh. That is unusual. Very unusual. Cheryl. Oh, I'm sorry, Cheryl, go ahead.
Doesn't, did how mu, how much sod farm used that road in any time, does anybody know?
They used to.
They used to, then the right of eminent domain occurs here and you cannot shut it off and say-
In 1960, that was owned by Louis Novak and Richard Morrow owned the farm that, you know, and then Helmut bought and more.
Okay.
And we always used to use it.
If you look at this, Cheryl, you can kind of see how Helmut actually has their own roads around their property.
I saw that, yeah.
So, I don't think Dave Johnson uses-
Well, but if they ever used it, the right of eminent domain, you can't take it away.
Take it back.
You can't take it back.
Yeah.
So that would make sense that you can't stop the use of that or the use of a driveway because it was eminent domain. And that's illegal. So basically...
I've never seen any farm equipment or markings or the gates locked down there most of the year.
Right, I'm just saying if he ever did use that road, then if you use it F for six or eight years or whatever, you can't say, "Oh, I'm sorry, it goes across my property, you can't use it anymore." It's declared usable. Like a public access road across the farm. And I was involved in a case like this where they couldn't say, "Sorry, you can't, I'm selling that land back there, but it was, you used it, but now we're gonna sell it, so you can't use it anymore." That's not okay.
Okay, this would be for anybody who's there. I'm gonna throw it out, so if somebody raised their hand and answered it, or whatever. If we own all of the South Kynil County line, all of it, that's Bath Township's, and we do what's being asked for us to do, to take this road over, where does that leave a development? That means you have to come to Bath. Now, if you wanna develop on Meridian side, you still have to come to Bath?
No, Meridian.
What about the driveway permit?
The driveway permit has to come to Clinton County Road Commission.
Yeah, because the actual drainage ditch is on Bath property.
No, I understand that, but...
But you're putting a public road in then, what you're doing now. And when you put a public road in, they, the culvert will probably be Bath, or Clinton County's culvert, but it will go into their property, and they will, Meridian Township will get the taxes off, and we get nothing.
Of the property?
Of the property.
Correct.
We're gonna go up, Karen and George and myself are going up to the county to, for Wesley. And Trotter will be there. So I'd like to ask you some personal questions.
Is there a reason why the rest of the committee's not going?
It's generally not for all, I mean, it's not a, maybe it's just a, like, the frame of what I'm proposing.
Okay.
A full-blown meeting. It's something that's done every year, where it's just something as usual, it's just a chair and...
Anybody else decide?
Well, this is just for discussion this evening.
Right, it is. And it seems very confusing is what it is to me. And I'm wondering why...
Would you like Mark to come to the next meeting, I can invite him?
Oh, certainly, I would rather have the committee come, because, well, see, for me, I'm looking at this, and Al and I have been talking about this back and forth. I'm kind of looking at the road committee, looking at this, because it is a little more complicated. But the whole committee, just put it in their lap and say, "Here, now," pardon for the pun, but to say, "Here it is, now, you know, look at it, digest it." And, and do that, but that's what I'm kind of looking at. So I'm wondering the information, because that committee has five members. We have two trustees that are appointed to that, plus two staff people that are appointed to it. So I guess I'm looking, because they're talking about the financial and maintenance of your local roads. If we okay this, and because apparently we do own this, or at least it's in our purview.
Part of it is public.
Yeah, if it becomes what we're saying it should come, that's a public road that Bath Township will then be responsible for. So that is a financial issue that has to be looked at. Now, Al, you talked about the planning commission, so would you please explain, maybe I'll be able to...
Well, I just think most of our stuff goes through the planning commission before it comes to us anyway. And all we are is, and we go out and look at roads.
Right.
And decide which ones we would like to get the township board to go ahead and do.
Correct, that's the financial end. So if we become owners of this, and it becomes a public access, then that becomes part of your...
Well, we've gotta find out how much money you're talking now. That's basically a surrounding area.
Yeah, that's...
And so it's not a, it won't cost as much to build a road on it as it would if it was, um, gravel or muck or anything else besides, um, the sand that drains well, and that does affect it.
But it's still an added to our budget.
It would be an added to the budget.
Yeah, that's, and that's why I guess I was looking at the whole road committee. But again, this is an introduction, and this is a discussion, so, you know, that's where my head's going with this.
But it also says in here, uh, if we take over a gravel road, we're setting a precedent. And if we set a precedent, then we're, um, with Kessler down here, we've got a problem.
All developers?
Yeah. But this is just...
Is that, so the county's standard is that in order to bring it up, it's not just sixty-six feet, but we own the whole thing. So there isn't a division of Meridian Township and Clinton County. It's, there's no division with this road. The maintenance of it would be ours a hundred percent. And what you're saying is that the new standard, because mine's a dirt road, would be if in fact our Tamarack Trail was a brand-new thing, we would have to blacktop and expand it, because it's not anywhere near sixty-six feet.
So the standards...
You would cut all those trees down.
Sorry, so the standards from the Clinton County Road Commission is, um, I think, over a hundred pages. I didn't include that to you, um, and if you'd like to see that I...
Thank you. Read it.
You can have it and read it. Um, it says, like, predominantly, when we talk about accepting a road back, we refer to Mr. Kessler, there's an issue over by Ann Drive and Hawk Hollow that if we were to take that back, he would have to upgrade that and bring it to current standards, which means he'd probably have to do a millen fill, he'd probably have to do curb and gutter. He'd probably have to invest some significant money into making that road, um, so that we would, it would be in a position for us to take it back. But that's on the developer.
Right.
So this, this is, this is, obviously, this is a little different. Nobody would upgrade this road for us to take it back.
I hope nobody does ours either, but hey, needs to be cut down. But if I'm, if I'm understanding, is there a reason why, now maybe you can help me out on this with real estate, why do we want to turn this into a public road?
Because anytime anything has happened on that road since I listed it, the gentleman on the north side has been angry and upset about people driving over it. I think he really believed it was truly a private road that he owned, which he kind of does, but with that full public access over it, anyone in the whole world can drive on it. So he, you know, when I called Mark, you know, first we pulled all the deeds to see if it really, you know, if it was a public road. And then I, when I talked to Mark Trotter at Clinton County, he said, "Well, we should just have it, we already do a hundred and fifty-eight feet of it, it's not that much more." They get supposedly, he said Bath gets money from the state to maintain roads, this is what he told me. So, um, and that it would then...
We do, we get money.
You want me to hold him too?
You do.
We get money, but we don't get it money for private roads.
I was gonna say.
But it's, okay.
And that is a private driveway.
Well, that's why we're...
I'll be with Richard Morals from his property line to his farm, where he built his house on.
So this year, we're gonna get ninety-five thousand dollars from Act Fifty-One money, and we're investing over almost a million dollars in roads. So a hundred thousand dollars compared to the million-dollar investment is, is, yes. So you're, he's correct, he's, he's being truthful, it's just the scale.
He just recommended that I then, you know, I just felt, it isn't really fair to the, to Mr. Morrow to, to maintain it when, you know, there aren't, there's already five up driveways, there'll be a six. And I, I mean, so I just started the process, but maybe somebody knows more.
I know, George, you're getting tired of your hand waving for that, I get it. You wanna come up to the podium?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
I'm by the wall, so I can...
Thank you.
I can't speak for the road committee, but I can speak from the conversations I've had with others. If you pull up the map, the county line is on the south side of the road. So who used the road, what do you roads used for, whoever does whatever they do on the road right now, it's all irrelevant. What, what matters is, is the buyer or the seller can get road access. If that's what they're asking for. Now, if that's not what they're asking for, then that's a different story. But to me, it sounds like they need road access. It's a public road, they apply for a permit, it's just simple. They go to the county, apply for a permit, just like you, you, anybody here. They say, "Okay, it's public access, here's your permit for your, your thing." You flag it, they come inspect it, they say, "Okay, here's your permit, you can get, you can have road access." That's it. The gentleman that maintains the road, as awful as it is, and as horrible it is for him, unfortunately, it's a public road, it is what it is. And he knows that, we know that, county knows that.
Public driveway.
If they permit a permit for that driveway, as simple as it is, there you go, you have access. Who maintains the road, that's up to them, residents. That's why we no longer do private roads. So it's problematic for us, so we, the planning commission does no longer do private roads. You cannot do a private road in our town, in our township. So as horrible as it is for the man that's been maintaining it for however many years it's maintained it, it's heartbreaking to see that, especially if it was you or me. But on the other hand, if they grant the permit for the driveway, they can build a house on it. Or, I mean, they can have active drive access to the road, I'm sorry, parts of the house.
But there's already a road to a home, and that's alleged to be a private...
That whole road to, to the end is public access. Where the county ends, where they maintain, is where they end and maintain it. If we took over it as a gravel road, the amount of money is in, is minimal. If we took over that road, the amount of money to maintain it's gonna be minimal, because they have to already send a truck all the way down there to do that road.
Well, the county does that with, with Chaver Cropper, with the...
Unfortunately, yes, for a hundred and fifty, or eighty feet, a hundred and sixty feet roughly, they come down and plow it. And that's what they're charged to do.
Okay, what about the home that's already there, that their driveway dead ends into our road, even though that's Meridian Township?
It don't matter whose road it is, somebody plows it, whether it's the county or whether it's that gentleman.
So when he got his building permit from Meridian Township, it was okay to put his driveway in?
I don't know about his building permit, but he got a permit for his driveway.
From Clinton County.
From Clinton County.
In Newark, even though that's in Meridian.
It's a public right-of-way, so Clinton County.
Well, because that's, that's the question, so it's our road.
The road is Clinton County's road.
Yes.
The property is Meridian Township. It don't matter who owns the property or where the property's at. As far as road access for that property, they need road access to that road. If they're, if they're trying to get access to that road, they go to Clinton County and apply for a permit.
No, the home that's already there, the home...
They must have applied for a permit, or it don't matter to me, because it's already there.
That's what I'm, guess I'm trying to figure out, if Meridian gave it to him.
Yes, is, uh, the property that you're trying to sell, Meri- Meridian Township?
Yes, Meridian.
No, it's Meridian.
Meridian, south side of the road.
That's what I guess I'm trying to figure out.
They're contacting the road commission, they have a permit from another council.
Well, is it, well, again, this is, yeah, it's discussion. So that's why I keep thinking it should go to the road committee, because...
The county says they don't, they don't, we've already repeated this multiple times.
I know, but you guys need, from my standpoint, you guys need to work on that, because that's gonna be a financial issue for us. And what I...
Sorry, work on...
Work on whether we accept or reject the fact of this road, whether we can...
I don't know why it's even before us, to be honest with you.
Because that's our road, apparently.
Why it needs to be turned over to public road, I have, I have no idea, why they're asking for that, and it's, it don't really matter.
Well, that's what I ask, is, is this gonna be developed? Is that what's being looked at, if this is a public road, one person?
If I may ask her, what is the relevance of it needing to be public?
I was trying to make everybody happy.
I see, yeah, I understand for the gentleman, right.
He gets wound up, he gets upset, you know, and I felt it was a little unfair, and I, and I started the whole process.
It probably feels unfair to him, but, but that's his agreement.
Maybe the buyer, because it's a different...
Yeah, please come, yeah, thank you. That'll help shed a little light on it.
Yeah, so I'm trying to understand the situation with this private drive, public right-of-way business. I went back and looked at all the titles myself on the north side.
Good for you.
They clarify that the lower however many feet each of those properties is to be reserved in perpetuity for public access to any property that lays along that line.
So it's already...
It should be clear, but it is clearly not, because of discussions like this.
Yeah.
And, you know, from the first time I went out there, the gentleman accused me of trespassing on his right-of-way.
Boy, does that sound familiar.
I apologized and left, or whatever. But it became more of an issue when he started contacting the police, having the police try to determine on his behalf that people were trespassing on his property. And so it's become an issue for, let's say, authorities who now have to negotiate old titles that clarify public right-of-way, when there's clearly part of this that is a public road, but does it stop where the public, you know, road end sign is, clearly yes. Like, we, we know that that's the reality, but, um, the property owners may not understand that fully and the implications of, of the titles from eighty years ago. So, you know, I respect your decision in terms of what you think makes sense, in terms of setting precedent, investing your money. I'm looking at buying property in Meridian Township, so I don't have a lot of standing here, I also recognize that. But...
I think you do.
But for what it's worth, I think that's the source of the confusion. So the south side of the road titles don't have that language, the north side of the road titles do have that language. And the people who hold those titles don't seem to understand or appreciate what implications are for public right-of-way.
Alright, even, even though this is under items for introduction and discussion, which is completely understood, are we allowed to send this to a committee, which I do think the road committee should be taking care of, so they can... Oh, go ahead. What else to do, go ahead.
Have you applied for a permit for the driveway?
I haven't filed the land yet.
Has, has anybody applied for a permit?
No, it's that, it's that they're discussing it in Meridian, that they would...
So that's, that's what I recommended, that, that buyer or seller applied for a permit for the driveway, then they have record access to that property, simple.
So you, yeah, it sounds simple, doesn't it?
It is simple.
So, so when you apply for the permit...
A hundred dollars.
No, for the road.
Is that Clinton County or where do you...
Clinton County, Clinton County, yeah, okay.
It's a Clinton County road, yeah.
The whole, whole lot of private, all the public, it is, what kind of... Apply for a permit, and they come out and spec where you're gonna have your driveway, and they say, "Okay, you have access to that road."
That's why it should go to your committee.
Whoever lives on that road, if they're not, that's where...
That's, that's why it should go to your committee, so that that becomes very clear, even though it's clear now.
It's counted out by the county, that's where it ends up.
So you're basically saying...
It'll be a county road.
Count us out.
It is.
It is a county road.
We don't have it.
We just don't plow, but it's a county road.
They even say they did.
They say they plow it.
Yeah, they do say they plow it.
To go around, turn around, come back.
The maps indicate that the county road ends at the road end sign.
Okay.
So, so the part we're talking about is not technically county road, it's private drive.
Private road.
With public right-of-way.
Public right-of-way.
For seventy years...
Is that public right-of-way they don't get?
Yeah, it's the public right-of-way. It, it seems like a semantic argument.
It is a semantic.
And I recognize that, and just trying to navigate it.
Well, that's...
Can you, can you have this guy, if I'm not able to call?
Oh, Miles has never applied, no, go ahead, Miles. He says, oh, for...
I have found a couple of them.
Only a couple?
Yeah, a couple, a couple.
Okay.
So, uh, as has been stated here tonight, you know, private drives can be problematic, um, for the reasons that we're hearing tonight, uh, that's why the township has gone away with private drives. The situation, as I understand it, is pretty clear as well. So about a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty feet is Plain County public road. About a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty feet is private drive, public access. Plain County, as I understand it, is the agency that would do the driveway permitting here. So regardless of any decision made by any township body, and obviously the township would have sway, I mean, if the board was to recommend the, you know, some kind of recommendation for the road commission, I think they would take that into consideration. But at the end of the day, they are the agency that has standing to make a decision here. Just another small addendum that would, my recommendation as a working professional in this space would be, you know, we see a lot of private drives, we have a lot of private drives. Uh, the only uncommon thing I'm seeing in this situation is that all the applicable landowners don't have some kind of agreement amongst each other. And I know everyone likes to get the township involved, when I've worked for a city, they like to get the city involved, and the city will come in, and with the heavy hand of the government, we'll get our lawyer, and we'll come up with some agreement, everyone will live by it. Doesn't always have to be the case. Six something landowners, it's a pretty small number, could easily come together, have dinner one night, hash this... dinner one night, hash this thing out, draft something up, hire a lawyer, write up a, an access agreement here, buy land, or even better, the less number of people, probably the easier it is to come to terms. Come to terms, write up an access and maintenance agreement, done. And it does not take the township to do that. That is something that private landowners can do. So that would be my recommendation, is that they also apply for a driveway permit. So my recommendation.
Trying to figure out where you guys sit.
My recommendation would be they apply for a driveway permit, see what Clinton County's ruin is, and I also recommend that the landowners get together and come up with some kind of share maintenance agreement.
Thank you, Miles, that's, no, I'm sure you were talking to us. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, again, that's for introduction, so we appreciate that time and discussion. It still is going to need a lot of discussion to figure this one out. I know you think it's pretty simple, all you do is go with the permit, you know, to do it. That ought to be an interesting piece. I still find that fascinating that Bath Township has all of that room, that Meridian's nuts.
It's because the surveys weren't accurate in the old days, so the, that's, that's what happened on Webster Road.
Yeah, exactly.
It's the surveys weren't inaccurate in the old days, it's, and that's why it's not where it's supposed to be.
Which makes them inaccurate today.
Property and lines are the same thing when you survey a farm and you go, oh gee, that wasn't my, my barn is not really quite, whatever. Well, mine is, but some people's aren't.
No, I got it. All right, so that discussion, it'll come back when, March twentieth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And at that time, it'll come back for?
Action.
Action, okay. Thank you for taking the time, both of you, that was much appreciated. All right. Items for action, we have none. Superintendent's report, item fifteen.
Thank you. I'd like to turn this first item for an update as to our boardroom equipment over to super, Deputy Superintendent Taylor Reeves-Hatch.
Thank you. As you all may have noticed, as well as everyone at home, we have a new giant monitor. We also have one over here, but you all at home can't see that one. So all of our new equipment was installed throughout last week. I am aware, as I have gotten several messages during this meeting, that the video is kind of blinking in and out, the audio seems to be working just fine, but the video is blinking out for about two to three seconds and then coming back intermittently. So I will be troubleshooting that with our audio and video company hopefully tomorrow or throughout this week. So far, it seems like everything is working pretty well, and it is already a lot better than what we had previously. So very much looking forward to continuing that and working out the kinks. I will be sending out at the end of the week some information to committee chairs so that they are aware of how to start their recordings for their committee meetings, and I'll also be extending an invitation for them to come in and sit with me to go through it with them if they wish. So just want everyone to be aware that that will be going out this weekend as well.
Can we get invited to that?
If you would like to, sure.
Why would you need a buddy?
I, I can extend it.
I prefer to be invited to a meeting instead of crashing the party, Mary.
Yeah, I can, I can extend the invitation to you all as well.
Trustee, you can crash. I have one quick question. Your, your agenda, you were saying earlier that you need a second computer in order to have the agenda posted, correct?
If the board would like the agenda to be posted on one of the monitors for the entire meeting, it would need to be done on a different laptop instead of mine. As I am monitoring the live stream, I can't have that up at the same time.
No, I understand that, that's what you were saying.
Yes, I was just explaining for the rest of the board.
So you need an additional computer in order to put the agenda on so everybody can see the agenda?
If the board would like that to happen.
No, I'm just asking if that's what needs to be done.
Yes, that was my answer, if the board would like that to happen, yes.
Okay.
Are we already providing paper copies of the agenda for folks?
There's usually ten, if that's what we have.
Which doesn't need to be done.
I wasn't looking for an argument, I was just asking if that's what we were doing.
What I'm saying is that for people at home, if I'm understanding how this is working, for, even for the audience, if they don't have an agenda, the agenda would be posted on one of these, is that what?
It would have to be on both, they are connected, so you can't just put it on one screen.
Okay.
However, if you're from home, you can't read what's on that screen.
Correct.
When the camera has the whole room. So you wouldn't be able to watch the meeting of everyone talking and see what's on that screen. It's not zoomed in enough for you to be able to read what's on the screen if I had words on there.
But on our screen, we could put an, your face, so on our screen, right there, that would be the agenda?
It would be both. You can't have it, you can't have it on just one screen.
So if you needed to change, to go to something else, then you would end up having to change both monitors?
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay, thank you.
That's what you did with the maps, correct?
Correct.
Well, I kind of wondered that. I thought she was just being nice, you're putting two up, but.
Nope, they're connected.
You have to do it, okay, without a new computer or without a computer, okay.
Yes, Al.
The amount, the cost, did it stay exactly what you?
Yep, it was the same as what was approved by the board. So we, so far, we haven't gotten the invoice for the second half, we paid the first half for the deposit, so we should be getting an invoice now that everything has been installed. We should be getting an invoice here in the next few weeks, and then that will be paid as well.
Thank you.
As for the rest of my report, the deputy treasurer accounts receivable position vacated by our now treasurer, Jennifer Wilson, has been posted and will close applications being taken on March twenty-fourth. We look forward to hopefully having many applications for that position.
So it's just posted?
Today. Treasurer Wilson and I will be meeting with Robert Benzinski, also known as Bobby Benzinski, who is our municipal finance advisor. He notified us recently that our two thousand thirteen A bonds could be refinanced and save us approximately a hundred thousand dollars. So we'll be meeting with him, with them to further explore that and bring anything that needs action back to you, the board, for approval. I was notified by the interim police chief that a police cruiser is now available, and we will not have to wait until September of this year, so we're gonna proceed with putting a new cruiser, acquiring that and getting it ready with the equipment we need so we can put that on the road, and that will put us several months ahead of schedule, so I'm very pleased about that. And for any of you that haven't heard, sad news, Mark Trotter is leaving the Clinton County Road Commission. It's my understanding that he has accepted a position with Angam County. We wish him all the best, he has been a tremendous support system for myself and our road committee, and to all of us, I, I think this board would agree, and that's a sad loss, and it's a testament to his abilities, because he is very good at what he does. Thank you for mentioning the loss of Mrs. Washington. We also lost another pillar in the community, she was a strong supporter of the library and friends of the library, Linda Neely, passed away this past weekend. I was notified by our assessor, who is a family friend of the Neelys, and it, I, it's, I just keep feeling like we're losing the pillars in our community that have the history and the knowledge and have helped bring some of the bright spots of this community to fruition, such as the library. And Marilyn was a patron of the senior center, obviously she's Dwight Washington's mom, so my thoughts are with him, but loss continues and it's, it's hard to replace people and the knowledge we're losing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. A public statement, too? You guys bored enough to make a public statement, or are you just gonna sit? Okay, doesn't seem to be any. Okay, board member comments? Trustee Feadman Bliss?
Nothing, thanks.
Okay.
I just wish Mr. Cocke was here to see this, all the times that he's.
Oh, don't worry, he's sitting there. Don't worry, I was gonna say, I don't.
Know that we're thinking of it.
Yes. Thank you all for your patience and for your, actually, your expertise, and it helped, it did help, so that's appreciated.
If you haven't signed your vouchers, please stop on your way out.
Spoken with a true trash.
You're talking to me.
You do, just. It's my turn?
Your turn.
I'd like to thank all of the public safety workers that work in Bath Township for the tremendous job they're doing here, day in and day out, because they're doing an incredible job. I'd also like to congratulate Jennifer Wilson, our new treasurer, she balanced up the county this week for the first time. It's all set.
Yes.
Thanks to the fire gang, too, the big burn fire a couple nights ago. That was an incredible scene, if anybody else saw it.
Wow.
Public safety was there.
They were there, yep.
Yep, they're always there. All right. Of course, of course. Okay, mine's on again. I just reset it, so. All right, we have a motion and a second?
Ms. Kellerman?
Yep.
Mr. Feadman Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howell?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benfick?
Yes.
Thank you.